Down at St. Francis Convent. Okay, don't get nervous now. There's only about 1 million viewership we have.
All right.
Tonight it might be 7:50.
If you're double digits, you're having a good night.
All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call the Crest Hill City Council meeting to order for June 7, 2021, at 7:05 PM. If everyone would please rise for the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Chris.
Ray Solomon.
Here.
Glenn Conklin.
Present.
Scott Dyke.
Here.
John Verche.
Here.
Darrell Jefferson.
Here.
Claudia Gazal.
Here.
Tina Oberlin.
President.
Mark Sepiti.
Here.
Nate Albert.
Here.
And Joe Koval.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, you have before you the minutes of the city council meeting held on May 17, 2021. Motion would be in order.
So moved, second.
We have motion by Alderman Sepiti, seconded by Alderman Albert for the approval of the minutes of the May 17, 2021 Crest Hill City Council meeting. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Koval.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Okay, you also have before you the minutes of the work session held on May 24, 2021. Motion would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Verche for the approval of the work session minutes held on May 24, 2021. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Koval.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Okay, I would ask for the city council's approval to deviate from the agenda and move to two portions of the mayor's report. We have some special guests in the audience tonight. We have two retirements with us from Public Works Department, two outstanding employees who worked for 25 and for 23 years with the city of Crest Hill in the Public Works Department. So we are going to do them individually and give everybody their due credit. The way we do this, we have several special guests in the audience tonight. We are going to have one half of the city council read one resolution, and then we will have the other half of the city council read the second resolution. So we're going to begin with Danny Price this evening. We're going to begin with the reading of the resolution and the passage of that. We're going to begin with Alderman Dyke on the reading.
A resolution honoring Daniel T. Price on his retirement from the city of Crest Hill Public Works Department. Whereas Daniel T. Price became an employee of the city of Crest Hill Public Works Department on June 17, 1996, and whereas Daniel T. Price, over the course of his 25-year career, faithfully served the citizens of the city of Crest Hill during snowstorms, water main breaks, heavy rains, numerous road projects, and an active member of the community, and...
Whereas Daniel T. Price received numerous commendations and letters of appreciation from citizens, and whereas Daniel T. Price retired from the city of Crest Hill Public Works Department with 25 years of service on May 3, 2021, and whereas Daniel T. Price was a valuable employee who, over the course of his years of service to the city of Crest Hill and the Public Works Department, exemptified those qualities that made him an invaluable asset to the city of Crest Hill.
Now, therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and city council... Now, now, that's what I would read.
No.
Now, therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and city council of the city of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois, as follows. The mayor and city council of the city of Crest Hill express their deep gratitude and appreciation to Daniel T. Price for the years of tireless and dedicated service that he performed for the city of Crest Hill.
Section 2, the mayor and city council congratulate Daniel T. Price for his excellent career with the city of Crest Hill and wish him a good luck for a productive and joyous future and for his continued success in whatever endeavor he chooses. Section 3, the Crest Hill city clerk is directed to forward a certified copy of the resolution to Daniel T. Price and to make the original of the resolution available to the member of general public during normal business hours at the city of Crest Hill City Clerk office. Resolve this 7th day of June 2021, Christine Verche Hall, City Clerk, Raymond R. Solomon, Mayor.
So moved, as presented.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Albert for a resolution honoring John, or Danny T. Price on his retirement from the city of Crest Hill Public Works Department. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
John Verche.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Koval.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Resolution 1106.
Would you like to say some words for a smart one in a moment?
Danny's maybe chuckled already. It's real easy in my situation when I came in, and I had guys like Danny and Johnny and some of the other guys who have had 20, 25 years to help me along the way. And Danny was one of those valuable assets who 100% of the time would tell you 100% what he thought and would 100% believe himself 100% of the time. And Danny was a great employee. Every time there was snow, you can guarantee he was out there. He took care of the outroads for 20-plus years in the city of Crest Hill. So all the compliments for the outroads that the city of Crest Hill Public Works received, anytime there was an outroad, it was always Danny. He knows more about what's buried underground in the city of Crest Hill probably than any 20 people put together. And that knowledge that we're losing is invaluable, but I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart for everything that you've helped me with in the last 13 years that I've been here.
And I just want to say we go back a long ways. And prior to coming to the city of Crest Hill, Dan worked for Supreme Radiator, an auto body shop formerly Rendles, for 15 years, and then came to the city of Crest Hill and gave 25 years of service to the residents of the city of Crest Hill. And many of times, we've ridden together during snowstorms and had some very interesting conversations, I will say. But you know what? You were well-respected throughout the community. You knew a lot of people throughout the community, and I agree with what Mark said. You knew where every one of them sewer pipes and water mains were buried throughout the city. So you know, you did have an invaluable asset to the city of Crest Hill. For that, we thank you very much. And so on behalf of all the residents of the city of Crest Hill, the city council, the mayor, everyone else, I would like to present a copy of this resolution to you for yours. Thank you for your years of service. Wish you nothing but good health and success on whatever your future endeavors are. Thank you very much for the commitment, the dedication, the loyalty, and the service that you gave to the Crest Hill residents for the past 25 years. If you haven't ordered a watch yet, I want a pocket watch. I need the big number. The big numbers? No. I would like to thank the citizens of Crest Hill for supporting my family for the last 25 years. And kind of sad that I'm leaving because I love the job. And the job went so easy because I loved it so much. So I'm going to miss the residents. And in the wintertime, if you see me, if you wave at me, use your whole hand because I'm not in the plow truck. Anybody from city council like to make any comments?
Danny, I'm telling you, I'm going to miss you dearly and all of our lovely conversations, you popping up in my driveway with questions and singing Danny Boy to you over the years. I'm going to miss all that. So make sure you stop by. All right? And great luck, great luck, buddy. You're one in a million.
Congratulations, Danny. Enjoy retirement. I know I'll see you around.
Congratulations, Dan. Nice seeing you here. Good mission.
I'll come down and have coffee with you.
Drink your coffee.
You're buying. Congratulations, Danny. Thank you for your dedication to the city of Crest Hill and good luck with everything you do. Enjoy life. And I will wave to you if I see you.
Congratulations, Danny. Best of luck to you, and thank you for your many years of dedicated service to the city. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Congratulations, Dan. It's well-deserved. I know you worked many years in the body shop, and I know how that was. I did it also. We became friends and knew each other because, plus also, you were my neighbor down the street for many years. And now you don't live to but a couple blocks away, so you really ain't that far. But congratulations. Enjoy your retirement. Take care. And it looks like you're starting off good with a nice shirt there.
Thank you for your dedication, Daniel.
It's on order. All right. Next on the agenda is a resolution honoring John R. Price on his retirement from the city of Crest Hill Public Works Department. We will begin with the reading of the resolution with Alderman Oberlin.
Resolution honoring John R. Price on his retirement from the city of Crest Hill Public Works Department. Whereas John R. Price became an employee of the city of Crest Hill Public Works Department on June 15, 1998, and whereas John R. Price, over the course of his 23-year career, faithfully served the citizens of the city of Crest Hill during snowstorms, water main breaks, heavy rains, numerous road projects, and was active in water meter reading and replacement of water meters, and...
Whereas John R. Price received numerous commendations and letters of appreciation from citizens, and whereas John R. Price retired from the city of Crest Hill Public Works Department with 23 years of service on May 28, 2021, and whereas John R. Price was a valued employee who, over the course of his years of service to the city of Crest Hill and the Public Works Department, exemptified those qualities that made him an invaluable asset to the city of Crest Hill.
Now, therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and city council of the city of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois, as follows. Section 1, the mayor and the city council of Crest Hill express their deep gratitude and appreciation to John R. Price for the years of tireless and dedicated service that he performed for the city of Crest Hill.
Section 2, the mayor and city council congratulate John R. Price for his excellent career with the city of Crest Hill and wish him good luck for a productive and joyous future and for his continued success in whatever endeavor he chooses. Section 3, the Crest Hill city clerk is directed to forward a certified copy of the resolution to John R. Price and to make the original of the resolution available to members of general public during normal business hours at Crest Hill City Clerk's office. Resolve this 7th day of June 2021, Christine Verche Hall, City Clerk, Raymond R. Solomon, Mayor.
So moved, second.
We have motion by Alderman Sepiti, seconded by Alderman Albert for a resolution honoring John R. Price on his retirement from the city of Crest Hill Public Works Department. Questions or comments? Roll call, please, Chris.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Koval.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries, resolution 1107.
It's definitely difficult losing this many years of experience back-to-back. How I said Danny knows everything underneath the ground, Johnny could tell you where every single water meter is in every house in this city. At the end, we were asking Johnny, hey, how do we get into this place? How do we get in here? Where's this meter at? And he could recite every address off the top of his head. It was truly impressive. He was very valuable in the snowplow efforts. He would come in and just hammer away at Zausz and Borio hour after hour on the far end of the city where you kind of get lost out there. So from the bottom of my heart, thank you for helping me in this transition and all the knowledge that you've installed in everyone else in your 23 years.
And again, John worked for 10 years at St. Francis Convent before coming to the city of Crest Hill. And how ironic is it? John Price, Danny Price, but they're not related, but their paths brought them together at the city of Crest Hill. And you know what Mark said? We all remember Johnny for all the work he did with the water meter reading, with the water meter replacement, with all the thousands of water meters that have been replaced over the last 15, 20 years in the city of Crest Hill. But they are a multi-use employment in the Public Works Department because they would go out, John would go out and plow the snow, he would help on road projects and everything else when there was some downtime from the water meter program. So I certainly want to thank you for your commitment, your dedication, your loyalty, your service to the city of Crest Hill for 23 years. That's a great run. And again, you were well-known throughout the community because you were in a lot of basements of a lot of homes throughout the city, changing those water meters and everything else. So I want to wish you on behalf of all the residents of the city of Crest Hill, congratulations on your retirement. Wish you good health. Wish you all the success in the world for whatever else you want to do now that you are retired. And I want to thank you on behalf of all the members of the city council, all of the residents of the city of Crest Hill for everything that you did for them for the past 23 years. With that, I would like to make a presentation to you with a copy of the resolution that was just read to you. And I know you have several. You have your sister here, you have your niece and your brother-in-law here with you. So I think she wants to take a picture, so why don't we do it like this? How's that? Like this?
All right. Thank you for the mayor, Dick Cantor, and looking forward to your time with us for 23 years.
All right, anybody from city council like to make a...
Well, I would like to thank you for everything you've ever done. You've been one in a million as well. And... Okay.
Congratulations, John. Nice doing you. I'm giving a hard time to you. And anytime I see you, if I have trouble with somebody's B-Box, I tell you, you went over there, the guy, you went there right away and took care of it. Thanks again for that.
Johnny, you were one of the most humbled, beautiful, soul person. Like, you always smiled. I've never seen an employee that always has a smile, no matter how hard you're working, no matter how hot it is. You always did your job with so much passion. I admire you for that. You never complained once. So thank you for all your dedication, your hard work. I'm going to miss you personally. I'm going to miss your hugs, so you know what I love. And, but give me a call first. And congratulations and good luck with everything you do. I really appreciate it.
Congratulations, John. Thanks for all the years you put in with the city. It was good to get to know you, become a friend with you and that. Going to miss seeing you on the street and that. Enjoy your retirement. Take care, all right?
Hey, Johnny, good luck with everything. Enjoy retirement. It's nice becoming a friend with you, and don't be a stranger. Come around, say hello every once in a while.
Anybody from the family like to make a comment? More than welcome. Anybody? All right, you're okay. Okay, we will go back to the... You're more than welcome to stay if you'd like to. You won't insult us if you'd like to.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You guys have a great night. Thank you.
Thanks, guys. I'm not staying.
If the watches show up, we'll give you a call. Come back. Well, we want to be official. All right. Good night. Good night.
Congratulations.
We will go back. City Administrator Heather has a vacation day today, so she will be back in tomorrow. There is no report, her report is in the packet. So we will go on to Public Works Department, our Director of Public Works, Mark Seifert. Mark?
Good evening, mayor and council. The first item I have you before today is an ordinance authorizing the city of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois, to borrow funds from the Water Pollution Control Loan Program. This is for the East Plant Phosphorus Removal Project. We've worked with our attorneys, PMA and Stran, and developed an ordinance in accordance with the requirements of the IPA. The borrowing limit established within the ordinance is $6 million, which is a little higher than we are expected to spend. We want to make sure we do cover it in case there's any market volatility. We do receive some good news this last week. We have been awarded $800,000 in loan forgiveness on this loan. We were not sure if that was going to happen with this loan dollar amount because there are some larger projects out there, but we were awarded $800,000 of loan forgiveness on this project. So with that, I'd be asking for approval of the ordinance.
So moved, as presented.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Dyke for an ordinance authorizing the city of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois, to borrow funds from the Water Pollution Control Loan Program. All of these items that we are going to go through tonight under this report is from, was discussed at the May 24 work session. Are there any questions or comments in regards to this motion? Roll call, please.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Koval.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries, ordinance 1866.
The second item I have for you is for the same project to make our city administrator, Heather McGuire, the loan signatory for all IEPA loan-related documents. This resolution is required to be submitted when we submit the loan documentation and validates her signature attached on all the documents.
Motion would be in order?
So moved, second.
Motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Sepiti for the East Plant Phosphorus Removal IEPA Loan Authorized Signatory. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Koval.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
That is all I have for tonight, but I know Ron, it's about a lot past.
Okay, our city engineer, Ron Wedeman?
Thank you, mayor, and good evening, city council. Yes, I have some items here that were discussed at the last workshop for approval tonight. First one here is a proposal for professional engineering services at 1906 Plainfield Road due to floodway violation. The motion I'm looking for is execution of this proposal by the mayor.
Motion would be in order?
So moved, as presented.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Gazal for the proposal for professional engineering services at 1906 Plainfield Road due to floodway violation. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
I'm sorry, who made that and seconded that, please?
Alderman Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Gazal.
Thank you. Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Koval.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
The next item on the agenda is for the execution of the intergovernmental agreement with the state for the maintenance of energy costs of existing traffic signals. Again, this is just a update of the old agreement. They're putting all of the signals in one intergovernmental agreement. The cost shares for all these signals is staying exactly the same.
So moved, as presented.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Sepiti, seconded by Alderman Albert for an intergovernmental agreement with the state of Illinois for the maintenance and engineering, energy cost of existing traffic signals. Questions or comments in regards to the motion? Roll call, please.
Joe Koval.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
The next item on the agenda is the authorization award of the Salt and Bryant Facility, worth the contract to construction by Camco, Inc., in the amount of $956,460.
So moved, as presented.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Gazal, authorizing the award of the Salt and Bryant Facility to construction by Camco in the amount of $956,460. Questions or comments in regards to the motion? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Koval.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Excuse me, you said that the contract value is what?
It is $956,460. We're only awarding the base bid in alternate 1. The 1,000,000...
70.
1,078,620 is the, was the bid plus all three alternates. We're not awarding alternate 2 and 3. Therefore, the award amount is, would be $956,460 for just those two. Any other questions? The next is for authorization change order 1 for the Salt and Bryant Facility. The contract, or the reduction for this is $403,195, which will bring the contract amount down to $553,265. This was to remove the construction of the Bryant Facility from the contract.
So moved, mayor.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Dyke, authorizing change order number 1 for the reduction in the contract from $956,460 to $553,265. Questions or comments in regards to the motion on the Salt and Bryant Facility? Roll call, please.
John Verche.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Koval.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
And the last item is for the execution of a resolution for improvement of Illinois Highway Code to use MFT funds for the salt dome in the amount of $423,000.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Verche for a resolution for improvements under the Illinois Highway Code? Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay. Questions or comments in regards to the motion? Roll call, please.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Verche?
Yes.
Motion carries, resolution 1108.
And that's all I had, Mayor.
Okay. Any questions of either Public Works, Mark Seifert, or City Engineer Ron Wedeman?
I don't have any questions. I'd like to thank Ron over there. He said he's going to fix up that division street so that going east, they have a little more time to turn left and go north. And they got it fixed and did a best job. More trucks are lined up to have the center line now and people can go around the right of them. Won't have to wait. Good job on it. Thanks, Ron.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay. Next on the agenda is Community Development Department. You have both reports in your packets. Morrow will be here tomorrow also. Police Department, our Police Chief Ed Clark.
Evening, Mayor and Council. I don't have anything for the agenda this evening. Just want to let the City Council know that we will be hiring two police officers on June 14. One will be obviously replacement for retired Deputy Chief Hertzman. The other will be our authorized additional officer. So they'll be sworn in on the 14th and they attend the academy in Glen Elwin starting the 21st. So we have two. I'm going to be bringing four now to come see you. The first two that we hired during COVID, obviously, you didn't get to meet, so I'll bring them along as well. So we'll have four to meet probably in the next month or so. I'll bring them to you.
So this will be officers number 32 and?
Thirty-one and thirty-two.
Thirty-one and thirty-two.
That's correct.
Right where we should be.
Correct.
Okay. Very good. Question, is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Any questions of the Police Chief?
I just want to make a comment. Chief, want to thank you for getting those lock it or lose it signs, see it or report it. Wow. Appreciate you getting those done. And thanks, Mark, for your guys getting them put up. So between the two of you, thanks again.
We have about 25 more that are coming in so that we can get a couple of their areas that we missed. But I'd like to thank Mark as well. He was Johnny on the spot and got them out there very quickly. So it worked out very well, and I think they look nice.
Yeah. There's a lot of them out there and they're very visible throughout the entire city, so.
With the new ones coming in, is there any way to make the phone number a little bit bigger?
I can see. I ordered...
It's just a little bit hard to read when you're going past.
You've got to slow down, do speed. I'll take a look at that. I'll give them a call tomorrow.
Put them right next to the trailer with the speeds on it.
I'll call them tomorrow morning.
Thanks.
Okay. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Mayor's report. You have before you a recommendation which was discussed at the May 24 work session also. All the questions were answered for the appointment of Ms. Cheryl Slobodziewski to the Crest Hill Plan Commission. Motion would be in order?
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Gazal for the appointment of Cheryl Slobodziewski to become a member of the Crest Hill Plan Commission. Questions or comments? Roll call, please, Chris.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Verche?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Okay. I thank you for that approval. Let's see. The resolution for Dan, Daniel Price and for John R. Price were taken care of, so we will move on. We also have before us this evening a proclamation for National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the city of Crest Hill. We will begin with the reading of the proclamation by Alderman Dyke.
Proclamation, whereas approximately 100 Americans are killed by gun violence every day, and on average, there are more than 13,000 gun homicides every year, and?
Whereas gun homicides and assaults are concentrated in cities with more than half of all firearms-related gun deaths in the nation occurring in 127 cities, and?
Whereas cities across the nation are working to end the senseless violence with evidence-based solutions and are promoting public safety in the communities they serve as officials to the highest responsibility, and?
Whereas support of the Second Amendment, right of law, and citizen goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories, and?
Whereas officials and law enforcement officers know their communities best and are the most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it and are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe, and?
Whereas we honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence, and we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe.
Now, therefore, I, Raymond R. Solomon, by the virtue of the powers vested in me as the Mayor of the city of Crest Hill, along with the members of the City Council, do hereby designate or proclaim June 4, 2021, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the city of Crest Hill. I encourage all citizens to support their local community efforts to prevent the tragic effect of gun violence and to honor and value human lives.
In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the corporate seal of the city of Crest Hill the seventh day of June 2021. Raymond R. Solomon, Mayor.
So moved as presented.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Overland, seconded by Alderman Sepiti. Questions or comments in regards to the proclamation? Roll call, please.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Verche?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
And I would like to thank our City Clerk, Christine Verche Hall. She brought this proclamation to me. So thanks, thanks for that, Chris, for this reading of this proclamation. Next on the agenda, you have a, an extension on the outdoor dining under ordinance 1842 through September 6, 2021. If everyone remembers that last year during the height of COVID, we did allow during the closures to the liquor establishments of the taverns and the restaurants that serve alcohol, the ability to have outdoor dining. They did that for most of the summer, probably from Memorial Day through Halloween. We had very few incidences with, with that. I would like to thank them, everyone that cooperated. I believe there were eight of them last year that cooperated with that. And with, with that being said, we decided as a City Council to offer the extension this year. Right now, it'll be from Memorial Day to Labor Day. We'll reevaluate the situation, the weather situation and everything else. If we wish to extend it one more time after Labor Day to the possibility of through Halloween again. Right now, we currently have four applicants that have applied and have received it. So it is out there for anyone else that would like to take advantage of that. So I would ask for a motion for the extension of ordinance 1842 through Labor Day of this year.
So moved, Mayor.
We have a motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Verche. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Verche?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
And I am sure that all of the establishments that have and will take advantage of this for some additional business are grateful to the City Council for their vote also. And again, I am looking forward to their cooperation with most of these establishments being within residential neighborhoods. I would ask for their cooperation once again. You also have before you a donation request for Will County Center for Community Concerns. In 2020, Will County Center for Community Concerns provided city of Crest Hill residents with $314,662.83 in direct client assistance, utilizing 633 services last year. So I would ask for a motion for a donation and an amount to Will County Center for Community Concerns.
So moved, $100.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Overland, seconded by Alderman Sepiti for donation. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Verche?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay. That's all the agenda items under the Mayor's report. I would just like to say thank you very much to everyone that participated and came to our Memorial Day program on May 31. It was a gorgeous day. Little overcast. We beat the rain. It was about 75 degrees, a little windy. But we had about 100 participants and spectators in the audience, which was great to see. We had, our City Treasurer, Glenn Conklin, was there. We had Alderman Gazal and Alderman Albert from City Council came to the program. The Frankfurt Brass Band did an outstanding job with their musical selections, both pre-concert and during the program. We also had two guest speakers. Tony Ariano gave the memorial address for the veterans. He was fantastic. And we also had a Father Chris Grove for the Police Memorial address as we were recognizing the 26th anniversary of the Police Memorial since we missed it last year with COVID restrictions. So to all the volunteers on the Crest Hill Veterans and Police Memorial Committee that come and volunteer their time for the upkeep of that garden, I thank you from the bottom of my heart. And thank you again to everyone and to Ron Romero from Crest Hill Cable who taped it. So they'll be broadcasting that over the next several months. For those who could not attend, they can certainly watch the program. And again, we thank all our veterans and all our police officers for the sacrifices they make during the course of their lives so that we can enjoy the freedoms that we have today. That's it for the Mayor. If there's any questions, I'll certainly try to answer them.
I have a couple. As you know, I reached out to you today because I tried to call the City Administrator, and I was told she was off. Back in August, September, I requested to put on an agenda, economic development, just for some more informational network, filling out what's going on. And this is not to pick on anyone. I think as City Council, we need to start thinking about some options. And I understand that I have things been difficult between some people resigning, some people trying to fill the seats of some head departments. I understand with election, but now we're two months into the election. It's been since November since our economic development is gone. And I think it's time. I feel as elected official, I'm responsible to bring this to the table. If the rest of the council doesn't agree, then we don't put it on the agenda. But I think we need to do this as soon as possible. That's, that's what I would like to ask. So if you can?
I will speak with Heather tomorrow, and we can certainly try to see if we can fit it in one of the future work sessions. Fair enough. Anybody have a problem with that?
And I hope it will be soon, but not far future. Also, a resident reached out to me in regard the garage sale, the two garage sales citywide that we do at the city. Is there any way we can allow signs on the parkway just during those two garage sales? Only if the city is advertising this, that we allow people to put signs instead of, not public work, but the building department, they go and they remove them?
Yeah, I got a couple of calls on there. Two hours waiting to, if Heather was going to be around to see if she could put that on the agenda.
Yeah. I don't want to keep putting it up. Because we lost a work session last week and I tried to reach out today. So does the council feel okay with that?
Yeah, I agree with you, Claudia. I think if we're going to host a citywide garage sale, we should be able to have, you know, temporary signs out for that, that period of time.
Just that period.
We should even have some that are city-issued, you know, or, you know, some kind of citywide, go to City Hall for the information packet on who's, who's hosting the sale, stuff like that. Really kind of...
There are.
Yeah, we do. They, I post on Facebook.
No, no, no. I realize there's lists, but I'm saying we should have signs available throughout town that say that it is the Crest Hill Citywide Garage Sale. Please pick up a, you know, participation list. It's long.
Yeah.
I know years ago, we used to rent a sign and put it out front. I mean, next, next year?
Yeah.
Probably won't be here for it.
Yeah. I'm sure Mark could set up for us.
Oh, yeah. The one we have in here.
Yeah.
Yeah. You just have to think about it because it doesn't make sense, like city advertising, so let's allow, instead of getting the phone calls, what is my sign? Do my signs. I mean, it takes time to put those signs together. Thank you, Mayor.
I also have, somebody called me up and asked if they can have that done. And I told them what I would like to see. If we let them do that in parkways, I'd like to see the signs only with wooden stakes, no metal stakes. Like the political signs, they got the metal, the rock, the wires. None of those. They got to put them on wood so that if they fall over, they're cutting grass, or the city's doing something, they can see the wood of the ground when that sign falls down and it's gone in the wind, that wire lays down. Lawnmowers cut that wire up and somebody's going to get killed with that wire flying at the people. So that's why I had the ordinance drawn up about no, no political signs in the parkways. But this is all over the parkways anyway. There's an article in the paper I read one time where a fellow was cutting his grass and Julie put the little signs in the yard with the little wire on them. He cut his grass because the flag was gone. He cut his grass and he felt a sharp pain in his chest. And there was no bleeding within the house. My wife couldn't find nothing. Went to the hospital, took x-rays. It missed a little piece of wire from that sign, missed his heart by one centimeter. He said if one more centimeter closer, he would have been dead. And that was that little piece of wire. And we got the bush hog and all these other lawnmowers out there cutting wire, rock, throwing rocks, throwing wood, throwing everything around. That's why I don't like something in a parkway. We're responsible for them. So if they put it in the residential area, make sure it's on wood only. No, no metal, no wire.
When, there's one in the fall, correct? Okay. So we have some time. We have some time to discuss this one, but we can put that on a work, a work session agenda item also. Okay?
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. City Clerk's report. Our City Clerk, Christine Verche Hall.
I have nothing to report tonight.
Questions of City Clerk? All right. Thanks, Chris. City Treasurer's report. Our Treasurer, Glenn Conklin. Good evening, Glenn.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to report regular overtime payroll from May 10, 2021, through May 23 of 2021 in the amount of $225,209. I seek your approval on our list of bills. Since that same time period is $2,577,967.05.
So moved as presented.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Overland, seconded by Alderman Sepiti for the approval of the list of bills. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Verche?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
I thank you all. If there's any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Questions of City Treasurer? Thanks, Glenn.
Thanks. Good night.
Unfinished business? We have nothing. Anyone? New business? Anyone? Committee Liaison Reports? City Council Comments? Positive City Council comments? Anything you'd like to share with your constituents? We'll begin with Ward Four, Alderman Kubal.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Alderman Albert?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Ward Three, Alderman Sepiti?
I'd just like to congratulate all the, all the students that graduated recently at all levels of schooling. Just want to congratulate you. This has been one heck of a year for all you kids in school that went through all the varieties of schooling. It took a lot of discipline to stay focused. And I just want to tip my hat to you and congratulate you. Thank you.
Including your daughter.
Yes.
Alderman Overland?
Even though we're not having a ceremony this year, I, I hope everyone takes a little time to remember the tragedy that happened in Chuklizavaki in 1942 that we, we honor each year, except for COVID, at our Ladis Memorial, which is June 10. You know, even if you just stop by there and, you know, say a little prayer or something at the monument, it's something to not be forgotten. I know we're not having this ceremony, but I went over and planted flowers again, so, and I know Mark had it mowed and everything. And it's still, it's still something we should think about. And on a personal note, I just want to say happy birthday to my mother, who, if she was still here, would be celebrating her 88th this, this week. And I miss her every day of my life, so.
Ward Two, Alderman Gazal?
Just want to announce that Ward Two, again, this is Ward Two Program Meet at the Park with the Cop, this coming Wednesday, June 6, from 6:00 to 7:30. It looks like we're going to have Rain Day. In case it rains, we'll be moving it chief right to the following Wednesday.
Correct.
It will be June 16, Rain Day. But so far, it's this coming Wednesday, so we'll notify the residents if it gets moved. And then we'll be at the park at Renaissance in Zauza Homes. Thank you, Mayor.
Alderman Jefferson?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Ward One, Alderman Verche.
Congratulations again to the two prices for their retirement, dedication to the city.
And Alderman Dyke?
Nothing to add, Mayor.
Okay. Public comment? Anyone would like to address City Council? Please step to the podium, state your name for the record. Your address is optional. Let the record show that no one has approached the podium. We do not, there is not a need for an executive session this evening.
Motion to adjourn, Mayor.
Second. We have a motion for an adjournment by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Verche. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Verche?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Motion, meeting is adjourned at 7:52 PM. Thank you and good evening, and happy Father's Day to all of our fathers.